See the little bracelet I got today?
Cute.
I said, "Oh, honey, that's yours." She goes, "No, I didn't do that for you."
Recording stopped.
Right, no, that was me, sorry. So I'm all set? Does that mean I'm live?
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the 19th of October Select Board Meeting. Once again, we're brought to you both live as well as on Zoom and many other media as a result of the restrictions due to the coronavirus part two. That's all I'm going to say on that subject. If everyone would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Blythe, if you wouldn't mind bringing us up to date on what we can expect tonight.
So we have a public meeting on the laying out of two streets for acceptance at the November Town Meeting, Oakview Trail Extension and Frederickson Road Extension, COVID-19 updates and public comment. Our action items are to execute the warrant for the November 9th Special Town Meeting, to consider approving the board's goals and objectives for this fiscal year, and to adopt the town's repres- represyncing plans, a couple of town minister updates, review of four warrants for approval, and approval of Senate.
Awesome. So I guess then we're going somewhat out of order so that we can address the public meeting.
Yes, so this is the last step in the process before Town Meeting to have the Board vote to lay out streets. As you know, you voted to to start the process about a month ago, referred it to the Planning Board for them to review it and report back to you about the status. They did that at their meeting on the 12th, and there's actually an updated letter in your packet from the Town Planner that we received just this morning, which shows you all the things that the Planning Board wanted to see happen and the status of those and they're happy to report that all of those issues have been taken care of or arranged, you know, arrangement achieved with the question about a sidewalk. So the action for the Board tonight is to vote, consider voting the two motions that are in your packet to lay these roads out, and they are on the warrant for Town Meeting, so Town Meeting can accept them, vote to accept them on November 9th. All in order, pretty straightforward.
Is there anybody else from the town that's coming to opine, or it's just everything that's in the House?
No, with the updated memo from the Planner, I didn't feel he needed to attend the meeting. Of course, if you have any questions, I can certainly get your answers to those.
I don't at all. I just wanted to make sure I didn't power over somebody who was waiting in the wings to make a presentation by...
Not at all. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on it, you might ask that.
But before I do that, is there any question or comment from either of you?
My only question is if this is a public meeting, do we have to open a public hearing in any way, shape, or form?
It's a little different. It's a public meeting, not a public hearing.
Okay.
So, no, we do not need to.
Thank you.
Blythe very kindly explained that to me before. I did not actually have that knowledge prior to this evening either, so I was very appreciative of that. Any questions? And I guess with respect to, not with respect to questions, but with respect to folks who may have opinions from the town, is that what you're speaking of in terms of folks?
Yes. In case someone wants to tell you their perspective about this before you vote, you can take that.
Great. So to the extent that I'm not interested at this juncture in questions from folks who are not directly involved, but more from opinions from anyone within the town, because obviously we don't have the van, the brains to answer questions, but meaning Rich and others, but we do value opinions. Does anybody on the Select Board Zoo have any question, observations, or comments? Anything? All right, well, then, hearing no comments, I guess then we have a motion, correct?
There's two.
I move that the Board vote to lay out Oakview Trail Extension substantially in the location of the private way known as Oakview Trail Extension.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second motion?
I move that the Board vote to lay out Frederickson Road Extension substantially in the location of the private way known as Frederickson Road Extension.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, and I guess that happened enough after seven, about 7:05, 7:06 was listed as the first thing on the agenda, so I think we can safely move on from that to COVID-19 updates.
Just to update you on the latest case count, we have, as of last Thursday when the state's report came out, 1,145 cases. The case count has started to come down from the high, the recent high in early September, and the overall 14-day average is just under 11. So that's good news. Hoping it continues to go that way. Norfolk County overall is lower than the state in case counts as well. Certainly, there's been lots of information out there about vaccines and boosters and who qualifies and when. It's almost dizzying, but as the Board of Health would say, we want to continue to recommend to people, suggest to people that consider getting vaccinated and staying safe. But that's really all I have to talk about, which is good.
That is, yeah. I have no questions or comments, Kevin? Anything?
No.
All right, then, how about public comment? Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak for three minutes or less on an area that, oh, we've got a hand up, and I just left a little... So to the, I was digging out my phone, to the extent that I know Mr. Hadad understands that we can't necessarily respond right now, but Mr. Hadad, what would you like to say?
Good evening. I apologize in advance if this had been taken care of previously, but as you recall, at the beginning of the summer, I brought up the topic at the same time in a public commentary, requesting that at some point in time there be a, some kind of information put out about the status of the old Town Hall property, the building itself, the property itself, what might be happening with it, what the town is using it for, or selling it, or whatever. And I recall at the time, I know Blythe said that they were working on such a study. I don't know if one was ever issued, or I haven't seen anything, or I haven't seen that on a future, on an agenda during the summer, so I'm just asking the question again, and I apologize if I've missed it.
No, no worries. I actually think that this is one of, one of the public comment success stories, albeit you missed it in the first instance. That's through the magic of television and technology, we can direct you to where you can go learn more, and so I'm going to turn the mic literally and figuratively over to Blythe to give you a little more information.
Thank you.
Hi, Ed. We did have an overview of that. I think it was either the August 24th or the September 7th meeting. I just, the 7th, thank you, escapes me. There is, if you go back to the agenda packet for that night, you'll see a memo on the topic, and at the meeting, the, both the Town Planner and the Building Official were at the meeting to answer questions, so I think you'll find the video very helpful.
September 7th, you said, Blythe?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, I will. Thank you very much.
Are there any other hands raised from the person? All right, well, then, moving along from public comment to action item number four.
Executing the warrant. Yes, the warrant is complete and ready for your signature. It has remained at 13 articles. There have been a couple of small edits in the last week or so between myself and Town Council, along the lines of confirming that the Article 10 for the solar project for the police station is both the roof and the parking lot, back and forth about that, and just some grammatical and stylistic changes, but no substance has changed, so ready for the Board to execute that. Tomorrow night, the Advisory Committee meets to vote their recommendations on all the articles. The only change I would bring to your attention, I didn't put it in your packet, is we have had very recent failure of one of the circuits in the chiller at the library to the tune of a repair, parts, parts and labor of about $23,000. Not on our plan of things needing to be fixed this year, so we are going to want to adjust the transfers upwards a little bit by that. We've already told the Planning Board Chair about that, just because it's fairly early in the year, concerned about getting to the end of the year, and while we do have a fund, you know, money set aside in the budget for those sorts of things, we want to make sure we can deal with others. We've also had some, you might have noticed some concrete repairs when you came in the building. We had someone fall, a tripping hazard, and so spent some money on things like that. It's been a little bit expensive so far, so... But other than that, there are no changes to capital plans or anything else.
What's a chiller?
It's... It works with the condenser to provide heating and cooling.
It was part of the HVAC?
Yes.
I was thinking it was like a, like a wine fridge or something.
I think we could buy a few of those for them.
Oh, that's why I was asking. I was like, what, are there antique books? Or it's probably HVAC, but I'm going to ask.
Thank you, yes, it is. I can get you a whole proposal if you'd like to read more about it.
No, ma'am. Wine fridges, I'm interested in, not so much HVAC, not stand. So any questions or?
None for mine.
Nope. Nor, nor me. And did you, now I know it's in here, but did you want us to remind our viewer that there's a moderators' meeting or any of that type of information?
No, just for you. I think I did send you a meeting invite for it, just to bring to people's attention, because I don't know how we've always done it in the past, but there are two bylaw changes, the floodplain and the stormwater are not actually in the warrant, they're referenced, so that we will be putting them up on the website tomorrow. We'll be taking copies to different town buildings. People want to drop by, happy to give them one, have copies at Town Meeting, but it adds about 20, those two add about 20 pages to what would be mailed, so that's why they're separate.
That's smart.
But we will, if anyone wants them, please let us know, and we will get them to you. Mail them, pick them up, however we can help.
That's good.
And then there is an unpaid bill to the town of Millis, so there will be an unpaid bill under Article 1. They were changing over their accounting system and conversion this year, and they simply missed that it was due, and we didn't notice it hadn't come. So that's just for the fourth quarter of the last fiscal year. It's about $1,300. We, we can pay for it out of the current year's budget, it's not a problem, and we are changing our internal procedures, and they say when their system's up and running, they won't have any issue with that.
Awesome.
It's just a, you know, it takes a nine-tenths of a Town Meeting, so we're chagrined when it happens, but we do owe them money.
Chagrined, that's a great word. Should use that word more. Just add that to the list. So do I have a motion?
I move that the Board execute the warrant for the Special Town Meeting to be held on November 9th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Blythe, what's, this is more of a procedural question with respect to the order that things are printed in the agenda. Now, when I was moderator, we could take things out of order, just sort of mix it up, keep people guessing. Can I do that here?
Oh, sure.
Because I know Madam Clerk is in the audience, and while I'm sure she can't wait to hear more about the Board's goals and objectives than she already knows. Perhaps, and she's probably going to stay, but if she needs to go to the restroom, or, you know, greet friends out in the lobby, I'm wondering if we could do?
Absolutely.
Six first and then five?
Yes.
So, all right, you want to tell me about six?
So six, and I think, Carol, come on up to the table.
Want to join us in one of the big comfy chairs?
So the federal census requires, you know, every 10 years, look at that, and that information is used to create clothing precincts. Can't have any more than 4,000 people in a precinct. So now that, so?
Now I know.
We have to change the boundaries, so Carol's been working with the state to develop the map and needs an approval of the plan.
Can you share some more exciting information about this topic?
Well, not a lot of exciting information to share, but the Reader's Digest version is, like Blythe said, with the 2020 census, our population changed enough that we were just over the limit in one, of 4,001 precinct, and we're very close to it in the second one, so we need to go to four precincts. We knew this was coming and had planned for it. The state, actually, you have a map in there, you have a block boundary, you have a block report, which is the breakdown of the population in each of the blocks, and then there's also a legal boundary description, which was actually the most challenge. Spent a whole lot of time trying to find a name for Bristol's, Bristol's Pond Stream, because it just can't be river or stream, it has to be a legal boundary, and took us more time than it should have to find that out. But we worked on everything, verified everything, worked with Barry, worked with Dawn, worked with Rep Dooley, just trying to, and one of the things I did ask the state to do, because in Precinct 1, it contains the prison, which takes up 1,500 people in there, so it's fairly small as voters go, and we have the most growth coming in Precinct 2, I think. Precinct, the center of town, that, you know, the 25 Rockwood, most of the concentration's in one area, so I did ask them to redraw the maps as much, the lines as much as they possibly could, to give us a little, little more leeway in that precinct, and put a little extra people in Precinct 1. But the challenge with that is, is you have to stay within 5% of the target population. So we weren't able to move a lot, but we did the best we could.
So does, does there have to be like a particular amount per precinct as well? You can't exceed the four?
No, that doesn't have to be a particular amount, you just can't exceed the four.
That's the only?
Yeah.
Cool.
But this does put us in a good shape, because of the population in each of the precincts. Now you see that they're fairly, you know, fairly low unless we have some real big population explosions, you know, we should be able to, you know, stay at four precincts for any foreseeable future, which, you know, at least that gives us an idea on capital planning, on budgeting and things like that for, again, the foreseeable future, which is helpful.
Does any of this, now that you've got four precincts, does it impact you and your role in terms of expense or anything beyond adding, doing a different sign at the front of?
Well, it does increase the expenses because it, you're, you're adding staff that, for that fourth precinct. We had capital that we planned on that we had gotten approved, what, last Town Meeting, I think, because we had to purchase a new machine and the pole pads and everything that go with it to, to supply that precinct. So there's, you know, there's, there's some slight increase in costs, but the biggest increase to cost is going to be mail-in voting, so that's...
And why is that? Because it's the same number of voters, but for sure.
Very labor-intensive, very, very labor-intensive.
To add, I guess I was just curious why, what about the fact that there's four versus three precincts? Is it just in terms of?
It doesn't change it, it's just, that's just moving the same amount of people around.
Okay, all right, I just wasn't.
It's just putting them in different places.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Nope. Isn't this fabulous?
No.
I haven't figured out which one I'm in yet. That'll be some fun activity for me later.
What's that?
Which precinct?
Just look at the map.
I think we're both in four.
That map's pretty small.
The red.
Oh, is the red, the red's four? Well, I will figure it out later. It'll be just like a fun, a fun little activity for something to do.
It's actually going to be something going out with the...
Well, I want to go like, screen bigger.
Boy, I have a big giant map that you're more than welcome to stop by my office anytime and take a look at, and we'll be getting the official maps once, so is, once this is approved, I send everything to the state. I'll actually get that right out tomorrow because they're in a time crunch on the state level because everything was pushed back, and we'll be getting the, you know, we'll be getting the big official maps and, and all that stuff.
And will be the first election that you?
May.
May?
Town election, yeah.
That you'll need everything while running by?
Yeah, so, yeah, May, Town Election. We'll be ready by then. We're actually required by law to notify every resident when there's precinct changes, and the timing of this is such that I'm able to piggyback on top of the census, so it will not cost us the expense of an entire other mailing to every resident in the town of Norfolk.
Look at you.
Brilliant.
Excellent. Saving money for the town.
Yes, I am. Anyplace I can.
Thank you. So I have nothing further for questions or comments. It doesn't seem like anybody else does. So I have to flip back. This is, this is a vote, correct?
It is.
Do I have a motion or I flip back?
I move that the Board vote to accept, as presented by the Town Clerk, the 2020 represyncing plan for the town of Norfolk, which includes the precinct map, block report, and legal description of precinct boundaries.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Carol, I'm sure you're just going to sit back down in your seat to listen to what we have to say about.
I think I left my card. I just want to go check on it.
All right, we will wait for you, Carol. We will wait. How about number five?
Yes, so in your book is a color-coded and a?
KP colors, I noticed them.
And a clean, not the prettiest colors, mind you, but color-coded of, from our discussion in late summer or early September, whenever that was. So anything that's in white are things that we will continue to work on, that we had as goals last year? Anything in orange are things that I think would come off because we've accomplished them, or they're not necessarily something that's a priority from that discussion? Anything in green is something that you talked about adding? So that's pretty much what I have to tell you about it, and we've kept some things on that just things that staff knows we want to, you know, follow through on that we've already started. For instance, development projects that we're working on or?
Succession planning.
Holbrook Well finishing that up. So I drafted, went over it with Kevin, sent back in a couple of edits, and this is the version that we settled on to go over with you to decide if you like it as it is, or you want to change it in some ways, see if the Board's ready to vote on it.
Having some technical binder difficulties here. So the, so yellow or orange?
Was to be removed.
Is, is coming off because they've been accomplished or?
Yeah.
Something similar, substantially similar.
The budget format we've, we've changed, and?
Right, yeah.
Studying the economic effects of COVID-19 doesn't seem to be something that we need to do?
Right.
So...
And then, green is the things that are, we're contemplating coming on?
Yes.
And then white is not going off or coming on?
It's just staying, continuing to?
Just making sure I understand the key.
Right. For instance, we want to continue to work on education and training on diversity, equity, inclusion, so that's why it's stayed white.
Gotcha. All right, well, I, and the only other thing I would say is, when I'm looking at the thing that shows the Plan FY '22 draft, and I flip to the other side, and it's got the staff priority projects, and then it has the blue block that says completed projects. Does that then go on to the next page?
It doesn't go on to the next page. It's just that when I was, when I was doing a copy save of 21 to start 22, I took off all the things we completed, because there's nothing we've completed yet in 22.
Because that's a new plan.
So for instance, if Holbrook Well actually goes online the first week in November, it's all set, I'll move it to completed.
So the next page then is, has no relation to the completed projects, but just is?
Things we want to continue to make sure we're focused on. Like I said, the development project, Southland Hospital.
So the next, I guess, is the next page just a draft, what it would look like if you removed the green?
It's a clean version of this. I took off the, I took off the yellow, orange, I un-highlighted the green, and said, here's a clean copy.
That's, that's, I just wanted to know.
Everyone likes to look at these things differently, so I gave you both versions.
All right, that was, that was it for my question, having read through what's coming off and what's coming on. I have no issues with it, so I don't have any questions or comments. Anybody else?
No, it seems to reflect our conversation from last time, so.
Thank you.
Can this be published on the Board's Select Board page on the website? That'd be great for reference. Other than that, looks great, thank you.
So next week, speaking of our goals, the website staff, Website Committee has a meeting to choose a vendor, so we can hopefully get that done in the off of running towards designing a new site.
That's exciting.
It is. Talking to towns who've done it recently or have switched to one of the firms we're talking about, and it's just hearing how positive they are about it and what they accomplished with it, and staff's excited about it. They're really engaged in wanting to be a part of it. It's been nice.
How long have these? Have the other towns mentioned how long it was from start to finish for the process?
I think every one of those different. I'd say it's probably not less than five months and hopefully not more than seven or eight.
Gotcha.
It's, I mean, we're going to want to get some community feedback about things they would like to see on the website and the way that website operates. We, we need to decide, do we want a clean front page that's got great pictures, because there's awesome pictures in Norfolk, or do we want it to be busy? And what's, what's going to be the priority of what we highlight? I think a lot of communities get stuck in, this is how we're organized, so this is how our website should look, when in fact, our average resident doesn't necessarily understand or should not have to understand exactly who's responsible for what, they just want an answer about a service or where they get something.
They want to know how to research it, how we usually?
Right.
How we're used to researching, like go to the hammer, like, you know what I mean? Like, how you, everybody's used to hunting for information rather than?
Well, and search tools are, have gotten incredibly better, and you want to use a predictive, you know, if I start to type in, trans- you know, if I start to type in transfer, it's going to answer station and get you to the information you want about that. But just because we call it the transfer station, is that what other people call it? I mean, that's the kind of thing we have to think about, so.
That's cool.
Yeah, it's cool.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Seeing none, do I have a motion? Do we need a motion? What it says we need a motion?
All right, so that's goals and objectives.
Number five.
Thank you, number five. Move that the board approve the town Norfolk Select Board goals and objectives for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, I guess we're on to the town administrator updates.
A couple of things. The fire station building committee met last week with Dorian Whittier, our architects, for the first time. And they provided the, this, which is in your packet, which is their initial plans for the feasibility study and for the, the project as a whole, a timeline. They are, they are already doing some, some consultant work just to, you know, study the building this week. They already have a draft program from the, from the fire chief, he'd done before they started, which really helps us gain some time. And their plan is to complete the feasibility and come to the select board at the second meeting in December on the 21st to present to you what they recommend for a concept after having studied the, the building, the program, you know, and whether we should tear down and build new, or we should renovate and add on, and how that will work on the site. So that's off of the bang. Staff has a meeting every week with them during the day, and then the building committee meeting is meeting every other week. They are planning to have a community meeting, we are, I should say not they, we, on November 3rd, it's a Wednesday night at the fire station. Kind of thinking of it as a visioning type session where people can come and tour the building, understand what we've learned about it, hear some very preliminary things about what the architects are thinking, you know, tell us what they're excited or frustrated about and they want to know more about, and try to hopefully get, get a group of people who want to follow it and stay involved. And, you know, if we can finish that, this phase, and, and the board is happy with a direction and says, yep, go forward to the next phase, then ideally, we would be spending the next six to eight months in the design process and be going out to bid before the fall town meeting next year to come to town meeting with perhaps bids in hand of constructing the project. So, I mean, that will require a debt exclusion most likely. We don't know what it will cost at this point. That's part of what all this is about, is to get that fleshed out. But, you know, both the architect and the owner's project manager believe that we could make this aggressive schedule if we stay on task. So I just wanted to give you that heads up, kind of what the plan is. I mean, it has to slip, but we'll have to certainly, if they stay on that, we'll have to think about the schedule for town meeting and elections and all that kind of stuff.
And is this, this is also available for folks? What you just gave me, because I think that the way, and again, I'm assuming this is from your fancy new system, but the way, the community engagement plan, just in terms of, so not only do people know that like on November 3rd, there's going to be a, a meeting that they can go and talk to people, but that they can also take a look at the community engagement plan, at least, at least have sort of a general sense of, I'm just, I'm assuming because it's in our packet, is this something that's available for?
So we have a very basic page on the website right now for the committee that just lists their names. We, we, we're meeting next week and part of what we need to talk about is, are we going to try to continue to build that out on the website that doesn't work that well? Or do we start to, the ClearGov platform has project pages?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
And so, yeah, we're just, we're trying to figure out when we have enough information for it to be a, you know, a location where people go to that's got all they're looking for, like we, we only have this so far. So we just want to make sure that it's thorough enough.
But is it in our agenda packet? So if somebody was watching today?
It is, yep.
Wanted to see what we were looking at, they could go to tonight's?
They absolutely can.
Select board meeting on the current page?
Yep.
And then scroll through and get, because I think it's helpful.
Yep, and Amanda's helping me with a, a web, an invitation, if you will, for the, for the Facebook page, the unity page, the website to invite people and get them, you know, a color, you know, graphic makes a difference, I think, for catching people's eye to come in and learn on the third, so.
And the only other question that I had, and you may not be able to answer this, but in terms of listening to your timeline, and I understand that no money is going to be spent, obviously, until town meeting has voted on it, or even, not even be spent, but sort of committed. Is it, in terms of people's expectations, is this a timeline that would decide on one plan, right? Like hypothetically, we think, we, the group, the committee, think that it should be a complete, new standalone building, or we, the committee, think it should be a rebuild of the current? And then they follow through that one plan and present it to town meeting? And if it fails, then they go back to the drawing board? Or do they have a Plan A and a Plan B? In terms of timeline, because if you ended up with a town meeting that was bearish on a methodology, how does that impact their timeline going forward? If you know?
I think so. We designed the process with a charge that they had to check in regularly, and one of the check-ins is the end of feasibility. For you as a select board to say, we agree with your plan, as yours just perhaps suggested, to replace it. Here's what it possibly will look like, here's where it will be located, here's whether we need a, need temporary facilities or not, here's what we think it will cost. And ideally, in a perfect world, you'll say, yes, you agree with that, please go forward into schematic design in the next phases, check in with us at these other points, keep us up to track on the, on the cost, so that when we're planning a warrant for this time next year, the board is ready to say, yes, we support a warrant article to go through a debt exclusion to decide to build X. So we will, you know, we have 3.3 million left from the police station, so I think we've committed about 150 to 200,000 to this phase right now. So we, the good news, if you want to call it that, is we can continue through all those phases of design. What we can't do is complete, go, assign a contract for construction because we only have 3.3 million less what we spend in the next year.
Right, now I guess that all makes sense to me, but I'm also sort of thinking back, same thing, town meetings in the past where people have tried to get the town to approve a similar structure and after it had been vetted by the select board and it gets voted down.
Then we would, we would have to regroup and, and go back. I mean, that's why we're hoping to have continuous, regular?
People involved though.
Check in, you know, to develop a, a following of people who are going to help us with their input.
Show up at town meetings.
So that, you know, we can explain why it is exactly what it is and that we had, you know, three cost estimates done along the way to make sure we were staying on track and those sorts of things. That one of the committee members made a, a point of saying last week, look, you know, it's really great to front-end some of this community input, but it's got to be through the whole project. This town, you know, deserves to have a chance?
Right.
To tell us what they think all the way and ask us the hard questions, so we have, you know, all the answers and we're absolutely confident that when we, when we tear open the, you know, the electronic bid come, you know, November 2nd next year, that number's going to come in at less than, than we, than we think it is and we're going to be ready to?
Right.
Get to yes.
That was the only questions that I have. You have any questions?
Yeah, I'd, I'm not sure it's appropriate for right now, but I'm, the two big, big projects we have out there are fire station and the schools, and I'm wondering how the school timeline, if we overlapped it with this timeline? The school doesn't have a timeline yet because we're waiting on the funding.
Right, so they, we submitted in May or June. I understand from superintendent that we should hear, they're planning to, a meeting in December, and we're waiting to hear if we get in. You know, it will be financially a little bit of a challenge because we don't really have debt coming off until '24 or '25. So if, let's say they get in, which would be awesome, they're going to need some amount of money at some point to finish that design work. I just don't know what that timeline is, but, you know, if they get approval in December, and I'm sure there's, MSBA has some steps, maybe the May meeting, I don't know if it has to be sooner. We would have a, a borrowing probably inside the levy to fund it. It would be a, a budget challenge because you're going to fund that over a short amount of time until you can get to the full debt exclusion for the school. You know, if you borrow money in '23, let's say we approve the fire station next, end of next year, borrow it beginning of January, and, you know, we can push that first payment to when that comes off because you want to try and keep your tax rate not going up.
Absolutely.
So how they both go together, and, I mean, I think it's, it's hopefully, you know, MSBA will see in our situation and say yes this next year because it makes a real difference in what it will cost us. And, and the hard, another hard part is we just watching the construction cost going up, and the library's costing us just to paint it a lot more than we thought it was going to. When you see the capital budget come out, you're going to see those numbers increase because we're just not sure, we don't want to give people a false sense of what it might cost, so. We'll have to keep our eye on that, that's.
Because those are two really big timelines.
Right. So things like not wanting to spend all our free cash and keeping some aside for getting through some of these little difficult spots is going to be important.
Thank you.
No questions?
Just a couple of other things. Earlier this afternoon, the Affordable Housing Trust met. They voted, we voted unanimously to accept the gift of 43 Rockwood Road. No decisions about what the, the trust would use it for. It could be affordable housing built there, it could be turned around and sold by the Affordable Housing Trust. So we're going to be, the staff will be working to effectuate that and talk about what the next steps are. One of the projects on the capital list this year is the salt shed. Planning board met on that last week and the site plan, only had one resident come to ask about the impact to them who live behind it. So that went rather well and ZBA takes us up next week. The dog hearing next Monday.
It's at seven, right?
Seven o'clock, yep. Haven't heard from the people we sent, the, the owner, has not contacted our office. We're expecting them all to attend and CC, I'll be getting you the, this, the script of how to hold the hearing and the steps. And let me know if you want to talk about that. And then we touched on the website already. Lastly, Todd and I are working to pull the, the capital budget book together with the new platform. And we'll have that, I am hoping to have that ready next week. But besides that, we figured we also, we're going to put that on the website. It's going to be too long to print copies for town meeting, but we do plan to, to pull out the pages from the projects we're going to propose so people have a little more information in their hands about it. Of course, we'll be there to ask, answer any questions, but if they want something to take away and read, we'll have that as well. Those are my objects.
Excellent. I have no questions. Do you have any questions?
Just, we recently were notified that we received two awards, right? The first one was from the Department of Corrections for the fire station?
For the fire department?
Fire department, right.
Uh, the, I don't remember the exact name of the program. They were having a lunch in early November, so chief was reaching out to them to say, thank you for this award, help us understand why we got it and who you'd like to come.
That was my question, I was glad we got it.
I don't know the answer yet. We're working on that.
And the second one was for cybersecurity.
So we applied for a grant. So, sorry, a cyber, cybersecurity assessment was one of the items in our capital plan this year. We, last Friday, Todd and I submitted the application to the state's Community Compact Program. We haven't won a IT grant in, I think, three or four years, so we applied to have that done. The assessment, penetration tests and exercise.
Well, that's fantastic. I was referencing the cybersecurity, cyber-aware community recognition that we were notified that we received. Apparently, there's a number of communities that were notified that because of their efforts as they pertain to cybersecurity training, which we're all huge fans of.
Huge fans.
There is a, a recognition call next Tuesday on the 26th.
I'm not sure I saw that email.
What's that?
Was this an email they sent you? Somebody?
I don't.
Yes.
I don't remember seeing that one, but I could have missed it. I mean, I know staff has been doing a good job of getting their training done. Actually, I found it super helpful. And just, you probably remember, we also included some dollars in our operating budget to continue our efforts, once that's done, to keep it being a continuous thing that people refresh on. Not sure everybody's a fan, but.
Well, I was surprised, I learned from it. Like I didn't, I thought I was fairly savvy and, but there were things in there, I was like, oh, I never even knew that, or I never even would have looked there, or, so I definitely learned, and I'm not all caught up yet, but the sessions that I've done so far were interesting.
Well, I understand if, if through that training, the state offered, that they have been sending some super sleuth emails and such, and I guess a couple of people have actually opened something they shouldn't have had to go back for retraining.
That's what it does, it triggers you to have to go back through the training. And my God, that should be motivation enough not to?
Here's a few more emails.
Pretty soon nobody's like opening anything. Did you give them an email? No, I did not.
It's my email, through my computer.
Call me or come to my house.
Got a few more things in my spam box than maybe should, but I'm like, I don't know about that one, I'm not opening it.
Mimecast is my friend.
Well, even though we don't know why we got the one for the fire department, that's fantastic to hear about and, you know, that's fantastic for our IT department too, for the initiative they've taken to enhance our cybersecurity awareness, so. Awesome all around. Thanks.
Anything else? And I guess we're on a eight, the warrants.
I move that the board approve four warrants for the period October 5th, 2021 through October 12th, 2021, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
With a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
We should have Ms. for you at the next meeting.
And so then I guess the last but not least is, do I have a super awesome ending motion? Anybody?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Stopwatch click. Nice job.